Person, we got our email to just pop them. There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We're calling the meeting at seven oh two P M. This is Brianna Ross, Board of Ed Chairperson. You can see on the recording, we're beginning this evening with our agenda posted, just so you can see what we will be covering during this meeting. And now we're moving on to item two. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I want you to comply on the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. We are going to hear from our student representatives via technology this evening.
Yep. I heard they had a busy week, so they recorded items and there's a couple. So their videos are, we're playing a little funky on my computer, so I'm gonna do my best here. No, that's not what I wanted to do. Share, we're gonna play a slideshow and see if we get volume here.
Center School had a wide, school-wide assembly on Thursday, November fourteenth called the Ned Show. Ned is a cartoon character. His name stands for never give up, encourage others, and do your best. Ned uses yoyos and fun stories to teach us how important it is to never give up. We had a spirit day on November twenty-seventh. Fourth graders voted on the theme A Beach Day, one.
Stay in here, by the way.
Parent-teacher conferences were held in Wellington, November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Families signed up to talk to their child's teacher for fifteen minutes and learned about how they are doing in every subject area. Free fourth graders from this class, free and free from this Lautowski's class taught both classes the importance of keeping hands to ourselves and respecting personal boundaries on Wednesday. This Friday, December thirteenth, is Wear PJs for C C and C Day. Every year, C E S, along with many other districts across Connecticut, participate in Pyjama Day to help raise money for sick childrens. Students and staff bring in a dollar for C C and C Science for two thousand eleven. Four million, million has been raised to support Connecticut Children's Center for Cancer and Blood Disorders. Thank you.
Now, it's now a full, a hundred percent.
Yeah, everybody's, yeah.
Going to participate.
That is correct. Okay, here is, I need to, I'm sharing this for a second so I can get volume. You share this, share sound, yes.
Caroling at Wellington Pizza on Tuesday, December second, started at six thirty. A portion of the proceeds went to the Music Activity Fund. A lot of family and some teachers were there to support the carolers.
That's not good. We're gonna have to try that again. Back to that. This file is huge because they did it off of, um, off the news stuff. Please hold.
Where the carolers when you need them?
Right.
That was a good event. That was fun. I was at that.
Love it all.
Yeah.
It cleared out fast.
I stayed. I ate pizza.
Yeah. I had the one to get takeout and said it sounded really good.
Yeah.
Where did they have the performers stand?
So when you walk in, you take a right, there's like that alcove near the line, it's right there. They filled that whole area with singers. Yeah.
Caroling at the Town Common for the tree lighting was last Friday, the seventh. There's a band concert Thursday, December eleventh, starting at six o'clock with seventh and eighth grade band, fifth and sixth grade band, jazz band, and the eighth grade chamber groups playing. There's a chorus concert Wednesday, December twelfth, fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, chamber choir, and the carolers begin at six o'clock.
Our school had an assembly for grades five and six and seven and eight. Students discussed the messages that were shared by the presenter and gave feedback. A presenter came and told us about the biggest mass school shooting in American history in Columbia and Colorado, but more specifically, a student named Rachel Scott, who was shot during the massacre. Her message was to spread kindness and leave a positive and impactful legacy. This assembly was very moving and there are many students and faculty that were touched. It's safe to say that there were many emotions and tears shed. During the four club meeting, after the assembly, students were recommended by their teachers because they show leadership and kindness qualities. We brainstormed ways to spread kindness throughout the school. Some of these included chain links, notes with compliments, and many more.
In November, we celebrate School Spirit Fridays with a variety of fun themes. Our first event is Wild West Day, followed by Neon Day, then Teacher-Suit Swap Day, and finally Rhyme Without a Reason Day. Both students and staff have an amazing time getting into the spirit and dressing up for each exciting theme.
Wellington Public Schools is participating in the C C M S Pyjama Day for the kids, which benefit children diagnosed with cancer in Connecticut. This will be on Friday, December thirteenth, and will be a statewide event.
Basketball tryouts were completed and the teams are preparing for their first games. Students in grades five and eight are representing H M S on both the girls' and boys' team. We are lucky enough to have Mr. Ignatius Palumbo Junior as the girls' head coach and Mr. Matt Dombrowski as the boys' head coach. The boys and girls had their first scrimmage of the season against Stafford yesterday. For all future games, the games will begin at three forty-five.
On Friday, November twenty-second, Mr. Nappi's Life Skills hosted on Thanksgiving Feast using all of the skills that are taught in the class, sending out invitations, estimating the food needed, making a shopping list, setting the table, prepping for the meal, including dicing, chopping, et cetera, cooking the food, serving the food, cleaning up after the meal, table manners and etiquette. Staff and students had a great time eating such an amazing dinner.
Have another, something like that coming up.
You do. Wonderful. Thank you for our representatives. Lots of great things going on in our schools. Okay. I know four is the P T A report looking for.
Yep, Carrie's there.
Thank you.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Well, maybe a little.
Good. Um, so just a few updates. Um, P T A just got done with our C E S holiday shop yesterday. It was an absolute great turnout. Um, and we absolutely love watching the kids pick, watching and helping the kids pick out gifts for their loved ones. Um, the H M S Holiday Shop did start today and it will run through Thursday. Um, P T A will have concessions table at the Court Band and Chorus Concerts this week at H M S. So come and say hi to us. We are also looking for some volunteers to bring baked goods or individual wrapped snacks or drinks. That would be super helpful. Um, I do have a link on our Facebook page and the P T A group as well as an email out to P T A members with that link. Um, the P T A is very excited to announce that we have purchased one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents in enrichments and teacher wishlist items for both center and hall memorial school for indoor recess equipment, educational games, educational puzzles. Um, we bought a crash pad for special education, um, you know, some comfortable seating, um, Hot Wheels tracks, marble runs, chalk, all kinds of like fun stuff, even heavy-duty soccer nets because they don't seem to last very long. Um, but we're just very excited to be able to raise money and purchase some items that will directly benefit our students. Um, and of course, it helped my shopping addiction, so I was super excited to buy some stuff, even if it wasn't for me. Um, and then that indoor equipment will absolutely come in handy, especially this week, um, because of all this rain and I'm sure the coming weeks. Um, so that was super fun. Um, our P T A meeting did change from this Thursday, the twelfth, to next Thursday so that we could have a concession table at the Band and Chorus Concerts. So it will be next, um, Thursday, the nineteenth, at six P M at the Wellington Public Library. Um, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to email us at WellingtonPTA at gmail dot com. Thank you, guys.
Wow, thank you very much for finding creative ways to enrich and engage our students. That's amazing. We're so lucky to have such a strong P T A in this town. Um, others are, that's lucky to have such a committed group of adults who really, really care about their kids and their school. So thank you. You really are tremendous. Thank you. Okay, um, speaking of tremendous, we're gonna have a presentation from Mrs. Marshall Wiganley from the Special Education Program. Hi, Marshall.
I'm welcome. Thank you.
Would you want to share with us?
Oh, I have lots to share.
Great.
I'm gonna share from my notes because otherwise I would probably keep you guys here all night talking about special education. So please don't mind me if I read from my notes. But thanks for allowing me to come in today. I felt like this was a good opportunity to come in and really share kind of an overview of what we're doing in the Special Education Department. Because as I know, you guys talk about special education all the time and it usually focuses in around budget and funding. Um, so I wanted to give an overview of kind of what that looks like. So I'm gonna start off by talking about the journey to special education, uh, which starts off with an official referral through a variety of different ways. Um, referrals, I'm gonna give you some examples. And this is not an exhaustive list, but this is primarily how referrals come in. The first would be from the Student Assistance Team. Each school has a student assistance team who makes referrals for students who are not making progress on their goals in Tier Three Intervention Services. These referrals come from the math and reading interventionists, speech and language pathologists, um, and/or counselors. Another way referrals come in would be through the Attendance Committee. They refer students who have had excessive absences. And we meet as a team to ensure that the student does not have a disability that is impacting school engagement. A third way is from the Birth to Three system. Birth to Three refers children who have qualified and received services through their system prior to the third birthday. Uh, the majority of these referrals are special, uh, sorry, speech and language services, autism and developmental delays. This year to date, uh, we have had eight referrals from Birth to Three. Lastly, another way that referrals come in are from parents. Parents are encouraged to refer their child. Um, if the parents feel that there's concerns, referrals can come from a parent of a child in school, but also from a child who could be three years of age or older, who are currently not enrolled in our district. So if they're a preschool age, um, be prior to three years old, they would go through the Birth to Three system. After three years old, if they're not enrolled, they still can be evaluated for special education services. So that's not the exhaustive list, but that is primarily how students are referred to special education. Once we receive the referral, the Planning and Placement Team, or P P T, convenes to review the referral. Each P P T is legally required to consist of a parent, an administrator, special education teacher, a regular education teacher, related services staff, such as speech and language pathologist, counselor, occupational therapist, physical therapist, and, um, school psychologist. So at the initial P P T meeting, the team determines if students should be evaluated for special education. At that time, the team agrees upon the evaluation measures used and the parent signs consent. The team is required to reconvene within forty-five days of the referral to determine if the child qualifies for special education. If the child qualifies, an individual education plan or I E P is developed and implemented. The I E P consists of specialized instruction and accommodations that are required to support the student's academic and social emotional progress towards grade-level standards. The I E P can consist of goals in reading, math, writing, study skills, and daily living skills. Related services may also be required and consist of goals in speech and language, gross motor, fine motor, and social emotional or counseling. Progress towards I E P goals are reviewed on a regular basis, which aligns with report cards. Progress marks are shared with parents. The P P T meets on an annual basis, once per year, to review progress on the goals and develop a new I E P. Students are reassessed every three years to determine if they continue to qualify for special education. If a student is making significant progress, they can be reassessed early with parent permission. The P P T determines if a student no longer qualifies for special education through the assessment data and their classroom performance. When students require a high level of service that is not offered in district, the Planning and Placement Team meets to determine the least restrictive environment appropriate for the student. So that would be outplacement. We currently, as you know, have six students who are in state-approved special education programs, which provide specially-designed instruction in small group settings. Some examples of the services include Applied Behavior Analysis, or A B A, using discrete trial instruction for students on the autism spectrum, trauma-informed specialized instruction for students who require significant support with emotional regulation, and comprehensive educational programming for students who require services for the deaf. For all outplace students, Wellington Public Schools is required to provide daily transportation doorstep to doorstep. Uh, see. Ride shares saw when available, available either in district or with other local school districts. So if I, if, um, I will sometimes reach out to other districts to see if they have any students going to a similar placement and if so, we can ride share, which helps defer the cost. Outplacements, as you know, um, the expenses are typically the most volatile within the special education budget. Related services and para-support is billed individually, so when a student's needs increase or decrease, the cost will increase or decrease. This makes planning for the upcoming year's expenses challenging and it leaves, um, it to the best educated guests due to the past year's data. In addition, increases in overall outplacement and transportation expenses for the upcoming year are not released until after the Board of Ed budget is complete. Currently, Wellington Public Schools supports eighty-three students who are receiving special education services. This includes students who are attending local magnet schools and are outplace students. The P P T identifies students for special education under one of the thirteen disability categories um, specified through the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, I D E A. Students are currently identified under the following care categories. So students identified, as you see, um, primarily the most are through other health impairment, under A D H D, A D D. There's twenty-one students. Speech and language is the second impairment at twenty students. Learning disability, dyslexia. So it's learning disability and/or dyslexia. We have eighteen students. The next categories, there are ten students are under, so for confidentiality reasons, I don't want to specify whether there's one, two, or three, but there are under ten students for each of them. Uh, one is autism. Multiple disabilities, which could be a student who has disabilities in more than one area. Herring impairment, other health impairment, which is students who typically have a medical diagnosis. Developmental delay, where students who are six years or under, and intellectual disability with more significant cognitive disability. So that is kind of our current landscape right now in special education. Data is collected by the State of Connecticut on a yearly basis to determine the overall percentage of students in the state of Connecticut receiving special education services, and it's broken down by district on EdSite. Most recent data is from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The prevalence rate for the state of Connecticut at that time was sixteen point seven percent. Wellington Public Schools at that year was at seventeen point seven percent. We tend, Wellington Public Schools tends to be slightly higher, um, in the identification rate than the state of Connecticut. Typically, we range one to two percent higher. However, each Planning and Placement Team conducts extensive evaluations to ensure that each student is being properly identified and exited using the I D E A requirements. In addition to special education services, Wellington offers five oh four accommodation services to thirty-one students. Five oh four services are federally mandated under the Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. Students who have an identified disability that affects a major life functioning may qualify for five oh four students, services. Five oh four services provide students with necessary accommodations so they can access the curriculum. These accommodations may consist of preferential seating, breaks as needed, extended time on assessments, et cetera. Five oh four services do not provide specialized instruction, so that's how where you see the difference between five oh four and special education. Special education provides specialized instructions around identified goals and accommodations, where five oh four just provides the accommodations. Lastly, I'd like to take this opportunity to share some exciting news about our pre-K program. Before I share the news, I'd like to provide information about the program. The pre-K program is designed to provide students, uh, services to children with special education needs within inclusive setting. Peer models are accepted on a limited basis. We currently have twenty-two students in the A M or P M sessions. Due to the increase in parent referrals for enrollment and the changes in the kindergarten age, Stephanie Bergen, pre-K teacher, along with the assistants of Michelle Farf, our speech and language pathologist, has started a Friday playgroup for the school year. The playgroup meets two hours each Friday morning. The goal of the playgroup is to provide children who are not enrolled in the pre-K program with an opportunity to build pre-academic skills in a very highly engaging setting. I enjoy going in there. They do so much during those two hours. There are four families taking advantage of the opportunity and we are hopeful it will grow. Information about the playgroup is shared with parents of children who do not qualify for special education through the P P T process and with parents of children who were not accepted into the pre-K program. I hope this information provides you with some more insight around special education services. I am more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I, um, I just wanted to add two quick things to what Marcia shared. Um, when Marcia came in, one of the things we looked at, because our percentage was higher than most other districts in the state average, um, we had done an audit. We hired an outside professional to do an audit. Um, were we over-identifying? Were students, you know, staying in special education when they shouldn't? Um, everything came back like perfect. It was, it was a very good audit. It made us feel better to, to know that how the program was running, it was running effectively, and that we weren't keeping people in when we shouldn't, um, or over-identifying. Because sometimes when you see a higher percentage, you go, or, you know, you want to make sure you're doing things right. Second thing is, uh, I want to reiterate this and, and the timing of this was not meant to be this way. Um, we're gonna talk about special education budget tonight. Um, we've been talking about having Marcia come in for a while. One thing she highlighted tonight that's really important, and this is a bit for the recording as well, is that when you talk about outplacement tuition, people think like that's it. And you have to pay, think about like the à la carte piece. You go to a concert, you have to pay to get into the concert. You're paying tuition to get in. Then you want a special tour and you're gonna hire that tour guide. You're hiring now a paraprofessional as well as your ticket price, right? Then you're potentially getting services for O T or P T or speech or all of the above. Every single one of those things is an extra cost. It is not built into tuition. Then add transportation. So when we start talking about how do we break that threshold of getting to, it's four and a half times when you start to get reimbursement, you're, you're easily into the ninety thousand range before you start to get any reimbursement from the state. So when we talk about the average outplacement cost being in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, it's because of those things. There are students, it's not unheard of, that could be in a residential outplacement. Even double, you probably maybe triple that amount depending on needs, right? Um, and you could also consider things like two paraprofessionals instead of one because of need. All of those things come through the P P T, the team meeting, um, and you have to do it because it's legally required. Um, and so I think it's important for people to understand that. It's not like you pay just that you get the, it's not a package deal. You pay to get in the door and then you pay for whatever à la carte things are needed to meet that student's needs. Some students need more, some students need less, but typically when you're going into an outplacement setting, it's high needs. So we'll talk about, more about that in a bit.
That also is true with students in magnet schools. So you pay for the service that is in their I E P. So it's kind of that à la carte idea also.
Can you say again, Marcia, that part about how we don't always know the cost, the exact cost of things prior to our budget process?
Yeah, it's a lot of, you know, our best guess. Um, because this, right now, we're building the budget for next year. We don't have the increases for the outplacements because they're building their budget. Their increases haven't been approved, so we don't know. So we look at the, you know, what it, their increases over the past several years and we do our best guess at what we think the increases are. And that's just the overall outplacement cost. That doesn't, um, factor in, you know, if the student is gonna need more services next year, um, because we don't know if they're gonna need more services next year. So it is our best educated guess, to be completely honest.
Mm-hmm.
Based on experience and history of all that student stuff.
Based on experience, yeah.
That's the best you can do, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I never.
Yeah. Marcia, how many, um, children apply for the lottery to get into pre-K that don't get in? Is there like a typical number?
Yeah, I actually wrote those down in my notes. Um, this past year, fifteen students were not accepted into the pre-K program who came to screening.
And that's a lottery betting, right?
It is. Peer models are lottery.
But they, it's a lottery thing.
Right.
And that's three is a hand force, correct, Marcia?
Correct, yeah.
H three and H four.
And then they were all invited to come on Fridays.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
And I have to give kudos to, um, you know, Stephanie Bergen and Michelle Farf for starting that program because they really were trying to be creative in finding ways that we could still bring these kids into district to have access to those pre-academic skills.
I'm sure the kindergarten team is very thankful. Samantha.
Um, can you say, unless I missed it, um, what time on Fridays and where is that?
It is in the preschool classroom and it is at nine o'clock.
What do they do if they're interested? Just contact the school?
Yeah, just contact the school. Yeah. We have a little paperwork to fill out, um, and so Amanda Pilati or, um, you know, they can get that to your main office.
Eight six oh four two nine nine three six seven.
And the other students go Monday through Thursday, is that correct?
Yeah. Correct, yeah.
Do they stay for lunch, do they come at lunchtime on a Friday?
Um it's, they leave at eleven thirty, so they're kind of, they're not here for that lunch, but they have snack, both sessions have snack, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Marcia. I'll say Marcia, have a good night if you mind.
Yeah.
I thought it was important that we get Marcia in um before President to speak, which is why I kind of brought that on the front side, just in case anyone's watching. And had comments or questions, I don't know if you wanna wait one.
I will, yeah.
Before the President speak.
Okay, um then item six is President to speak and before we start that. I just wanted to um bring everyone's attention to the Policy Committee. Meeting minutes from November twentieth, those are available with the rest of our minutes. But one of the things that was discussed was topic of President to speak. And how to include some more back and forth between the community and um the members of the board. So if you wanna know kind of what was discussed about that, you can refer back to that meeting recording or look at those minutes. Um and we were gonna continue that conversation and see what kind of changes we'd like to make going forward. Okay, so if you're interested in President to speak, go ahead and raise your hand either in person or online. What did you said?
They can unmute, they can unmute if you don't mind.
Scanning, scanning, good. Okay, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well, thank you. Okay, item seven is about communications.
I'm not seeing anything.
Not received, all right, well. Right in. We're willing to accept all communications going forward, anyone? Are you, are you ready for the big one here?
Yeah.
Number eight superintendent.
So staffing, um I recorded this last, last meeting, but just sharing again, Lisa Decker has started. She's the new special education teacher at Center School. Um I will say we're looking for, I get emails each day for when they're looking for a little extra support for the after-school program. So if you know anyone that's uh sixteen years or older that wants to either sub or look for a, a, a job. Um Kelly Sullivan's our director and she's looking to bring someone on. It's actually cheaper than paying someone time and a half to cover, we are covering all the open slots. But it'd be nice to have some subs and some extra people, so if you know someone that's looking, we have some openings.
How old did you say?
Uh sixteen or older. Yep. Um it's really just the support positions at this point. Uh as far as the disciplinary data, um Center School had forty-six behavior referrals since your last meeting. That number's up slightly from the prior month, um I will say less physical aggression, which is good. Um and, and inappropriate language referrals, both of those things were down. Um disruptive behavior and referrals for non-compliance were a little higher this month. Um I will say the shakeup of the month of November is always challenging for students. Um we, we break routines and kids thrive on routines. Um as far as hall school, they had twenty-six behavior referrals since the last meeting. Uh that number is down from the last month, which is good. Um and they actually, so in that twenty-six referrals, they have majors and minors. And there are a lot more minors in this month than majors, and so. When I get the report, it comes out things like there's disrespect twice. And one is disrespect major and one is disrespect minor. And there was a lot more of those in the minor category, which is good, which is what we're looking for. Um so hopefully that number keeps going down, um and uh no bullying cases this month at all. The item C, facilities manager. Uh we have an application um that someone put in for the position, resume looks good, it's interesting. Uh we have set up an interview, so I know there's some folks on the board that were invited to be part of that, so that's scheduled. I did reach out to the first selectman. Uh selectman?
No.
Um and, and the Ashford superintendent to see if they're interested in sharing the position. I know Selectman Tanaka has it on his agenda or coming up, he said they're gonna be discussing it. I'll be honest, just based upon our conversation, I don't think it's uh, it's of interest at this point in time. Um and the Ashford superintendent was on leave, so she's on her way back. And so when she comes back, that's when I'll have that conversation with her. Um that is it, this candidate is not outstanding and something goes forward there, so I'll keep you posted on that, so stay tuned. Um the next item, I'm gonna put this on screen for you so you can see it. Um Brianna uh sent me an email on her brilliance of driving and the thought process of firing here. Um she had an idea to, again, we're talking about community and sharing information, trying to get people to be interested. Um to do a BOE highlights document of each board meeting. Um I drafted this first one. Uh she coined it, the top three from the BOE, she had several names and that's the one present and I selected. Um it will be shared in a digital backpack. And each month we'll pull three items from the meeting to be shared in the digital backpack that we think will be things to, that, you know, community members can grab on to and, and learn about. It is intended to be shorter, um so it's snippets, it's not the minutes. So um I will link in here the video and I'll link the minutes once they're posted. The idea here is just to catch somebody and like give them that information quick and go, hey, click here if you wanna learn more. Um so this is the start of it and I just put the um, the budget process, the workshops down there. This, I wanted to show you first before this went out. Um so this will go out tomorrow and then actually I'll probably write another one tomorrow or the next day. And then it will go out in a digital backpack on Friday for this meeting, okay? Feedback, question, comments about this?
Five thirty or six o'clock?
Ooh, good catch.
Five thirty, right?
It is five thirty. Um. It's five thirty, yes, you're right, cause it's five thirty, cause CIP's at seven, right? Good catch.
Really, when is?
I checked the dates, I missed the time. I'll check, I'll make sure the right time is on this one.
Cause when we got an email, it said five thirty and six, six.
Well, one of them is for the special meeting too that's coming up, that's about my steps. So I'll make sure that they're all correct when they come out.
We just want people to feel comfortable.
Investigate.
Yeah, cause that was the town we did that correct.
That's a point.
So um that's good, and then ironically, this is the next item. What's this, let's see, it's right on here, it is five thirty, John. So um we received the budget calendar update from the business office, it's not ours. Which are all right on here, five thirty, it's these dates they're now on here. So your budget will be presented to the Board of Finance on Thursday, February twenty-seven, you can see the rest of the dates there. Um I did receive an email from Superintendent Region nineteen Sharon Knoyer. Um she asked if any Wellington boards would like to attend their municipal meeting. Um to discuss kind of the impact of the upcoming budget season, what's going on, what's on, on the forefront of your minds as far as the budget goes. This is my thought, please try a minute. Uh she wanted to know who to invite. You could invite the entire board, you could all go, you just couldn't make decisions together. Um but my thought was, an invitation should go to Selectman Tanaka. It should go to Bruce Lawler, the Lawler as the Chair of Board of Finance, um and it should go to Brianna as Chair. Um the invites will go out this week and the date of the meeting is Tuesday, January fourteenth at six PM and it is on Zoom. So my question is, do you all wanna be invited? Do you wanna add anybody to that list, do you wanna add their entire board? How, how would you like to do that?
That's our next regular meeting, too.
The?
That January fourteenth, it's the same day as our regular meeting.
Right, it's before, correct. This is six, so you could use Zoom if you wanted.
Okay.
I don't know how long it's gonna last, I don't know.
So there's a lot to talk about in that meeting. Um what the region board is considering. Which is a good idea for our town and for Ashford and for Mansfield as well. Is if you look at. The responsibility of each town in each budget season. Towns like ours, ours and Ashford, who send a few, far fewer kids to Eo than Mansfield does. What we contribute to the Region nineteen budget is based on how many students we send to Eo Smith. What's happening is, what's happened for, for years, is you'll get peaks and valleys. And this year, Ashford is projected to have a ten percent increase in their contribution to Eo. So what one of the board members did was design uh a more. Consistent. Way of looking at it, so basically it, it's like how you pay for insurance, where there's some years, we look back three years for your attendance data and. Basically judged off of that, and what it does is it really levels out Wellington and Ashford and keeps Mansfield basically the same. And it's just a way to have a much more predictable budget for smaller towns like, like ours and like Ashford. Um we're currently in the projected five point three percent increase. Uh because we are sending twenty additional students to Eo. Uh in, maybe it's not twenty, either Mansfield losing twenty, we're contributing more, like it, it's a whole. Thing I actually have.
It's off a year, it's, it's.
Yeah, so. That's being discussed and we invited, we also invited all our state representatives, Tammy, Jeff, and then the representatives from. I think Mansfield was the general representative, then Tammy. Um Ashford, right, too, Pat. Is it Pat, Pat, I'm sure you're sure. I'm not sure, but that representative is invited as well, we're trying to get as much representation from the state because in order for this to pass. There has to be change to the charter between the three towns, all three towns have to approve. The predicted holdout on the approval is Mansfield because they don't really gain anything. They don't lose anything, but they don't really gain anything, so that's what we're, we're trying to do, we're trying to. Kind of just make it more predictable for all towns, that would. Make it a lot easier for us to work on our budget too, because part of our budget approval process is approving Eo Smith's budget and then the town's budget. It's an important meeting to attend, it's. We may get there and the representatives may say, there's really no chance of this passing, we're just gonna continue like we do. Um but that's kind of the big thing on that meeting. So I, I will be there as a Eo board member, so I will definitely be there.
Does the board only soon?
Yes, yes, it is a Zoom meeting.
Is it? There's not unlimited number, us that could go, right?
Hmm, you bet all ten, you, you just couldn't take any votes or anything.
Like couldn't we just come here the hour before our meeting and Zoom in together?
I don't see why not, I can confirm with that with the attorney, you just couldn't make any, take any decision.
For us.
Uh huh. We didn't talk about it.
And probably wouldn't speak. Brianna and the, the three peoples.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that or if you want all. If you wanna move your board meeting later that night, if you wanna move your board meeting.
This is just an initial meeting, I don't think it's gonna go more than an hour, this is just kind of a. A proposal, bit of a feeling out process, this is not really a one that's gonna go into delve into great detail, so I think an hour is okay.
Okay, so. Good, okay, I would say, why not have like a viewing party?
So just invite the entire board?
Yeah.
All the boards here, anybody that wants to come?
Instead of trying to like Zoom while you're driving, whatever to get here, and then if it goes longer. Um I would recommend you.
Yeah, I'm gonna stick around and then I'll just.
Go like for, if you wanna be here with it.
Well, it's all, there's nothing, there's nothing at those.
No, I mean, we have to start our meeting, you could step out and continue the meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, and then tell us a reader.
So you would all get the, like, do you want to go to all um BOF? All, I, I mean, it's not who cares, it's a Zoom meeting, if they attend, they attend, right? It's, it's good information, and all selectmen?
Sure, yeah, I mean.
It's not really a CIP thing at all, I don't think.
No, this is very much budget area.
So I'll just, I'll give her all the names for BOE, BOF.
I think open public.
And BOF.
Viewing.
This.
No, I don't, I, I, I think the information's public, I think it is, and I'm about to say no, but I think it is, I'd have to check with Sharon over short.
And then you could.
I bet it has to be if you're calling in to order and you are posting an agenda.
Right, yeah, so then um that might be good to tell the board that. That's going on too, cause then sure we have towns people are interested in that unconditional stuff.
I can ask Sharon to try and just.
I don't know, I don't know, try to like overrun what she's trying to do, she's trying to keep it intimate and.
No, it's, it's, no.
Okay. I think they don't do it out of percentage?
No. You, you, you're basically paying almost, well, we do have a percentage, but it's present, your percentage is who you send to the school.
So it's by number of students? They decide the budget off?
Yeah, yeah, so Mansfield has six hundred and something, something along those lines, we're sending. Two hundred, I think, two hundred, two oh something and Ashford's in the one ninety range now, they were in the one seventy range. So they're paying a significant amount for.
Does anybody know when um, when Lomtak and Ellis send out their? Um what's the right word, acceptance? Acceptance, declaration?
I don't.
It's a while though, isn't it? Well, the application, I think, is like now, yeah. Or it's past, I don't know, it's right around now, just wondering, cause that makes it a time to record.
I have all the information now, but I don't know, there's no, it's not a jet or anything, it's just, it's just an invite right now, so.
Okay.
I can, I can talk to Sharon and get more information.
Yeah, I appreciate her.
Yeah, cause I think it's important when we, if she's gonna invite people that you know, but being invited to, so, okay.
Can I ask you, did we receive any communication from the Board of Finance yet?
I did not.
Okay.
I know it was on their agenda, but I didn't get any budget. I don't know, was there anything like that?
What we said about? Don't, because the Board of Finance usually sends us an email, okay, about like, yeah, they're.
A zero.
Very, 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 it's been like, my budget's already been developed.
Yeah, okay, just wondering if that's happening.
And just as a quick side note, that ten percent for Ashford, that five percent for us. The budget that we went over is just contractual and statutory raises, that's all it was.
Not even.
Not even anything else, so it's probably getting wider.
It was five hundred.
And it's a, yeah, I think we're at five point eight something then. I didn't play it afterwards, I haven't.
Okay, do you know figure out for that?
No, yeah, they put together a pretty rough draft, but even in the rough draft was.
Okay.
My, my others that I, I really only have one item, uh we obviously had a snow day last week, that was quite a surprise. I literally had to send a picture to the other superintendent groups, cause they did not believe how much snow we had. Um and then they went, okay, we got it, and as soon as we called our snow day, uh everybody else followed, if you noticed. Um behind us, so Colin, Stafford, you know, everybody went. So uh we're, we're, it's almost our last day of school, June twelfth at this point. Um but we won't push out a new calendar until a little bit later if you're serving out there.
Stick around with rain for now. Okay, item number nine is our financial report for just under.
Yeah, sorry this agenda was posted late, you get this information late, um obviously with the snow day and they shut down this building and then you can't post anything in this building on Friday, cause they don't work on Fridays. Um so. This is the financial report, so Programs one and two uh were very similar, I'm gonna make it bigger.
Thank you.
How's that? Uh Programs one and two were very similar, um both spent some funds on supplies. Both had EMCOR heating projects repairs done, um and then the Title One. Grant funds that we get that are applied to salaries were applied to both, so. Um I think last month HMS only had six thousand dollars in their balance, they now have thirty-nine thousand, so. Um they're doing okay, very consistent. Uh Program Three is the one that we're gonna do some talking about. Um it's not as bad as it appears there, but it's, it's um, it's gaining our attention again. So I had a special meeting, budget meeting with uh my team, which is uh Marcia. Her assistant Penny, um Donna and myself, and we went through. All of their current costs, all of what they're, um they know for billing today, uh and we have several increases. Um including outplacement tuition, prices gone up, uh transportation costs have gone up. And the staff that we've hired in district, uh the staff that left and we, we had budgeted, the new people are more expensive. Um so that's gone up, uh and then miscellaneous items, uh the new copier contract was more expensive. Homebound instruction, we don't, you know, we don't budget anything for that, and we actually had to do something for homebound instruction. And then the summer school costs were a little more expensive. At this point, I'm looking at a two hundred and. At this point, I'm looking at a two hundred and thirty one thousand dollar shortfall. Um. That's after all the grants. Um are applied, so what you don't see there is the excess cost grant, we expect we're gonna get over four hundred thousand this year. That's the highest I've ever seen in this in this town, so we're thinking in the range of four oh seven, it could be a little bit higher. Um it could be a little bit lower if the state play game, plays games with the percentage again, we'll see, um. I'll share a couple budgetary adjustments in the transfer agenda, uh item that's that's to be addressed in a little bit to address the shortfall. But I thought it was important just to give you a snapshot of, this is where that program is at, um. There's not a heck of a lot you can do about it, uh programs four through eight minimal change, um and then program nine. Uh we encumbered funds for students that are attending magnet schools, uh the school choice there, so that's encumbered, that was about fifteen thousand. Um and then program ten was basically relatively unchanged, some minor things in there, we're gonna have some money in in fringe. Uh which is why I'm gonna talk to you about um some transfers. Can I move to that?
Yes.
Any questions about this? Okay.
One though, what if that?
Yeah.
Four hundred seven coming in from excess cover, then two thirty one when it arrives? At least communicate.
So that is in the whole five fifty seven today, the new teacher's not encumbered. And they still have a program to run, they're still, it's just the outplacement, like they still have assessments they have to do, they still have supply money they, that they're to run their programs. So I anticipate that number is gonna be seven hundred thousand dollars. So the number I'm working off of right now, that I am expecting special ed to be, that the end of the to, what will their at the end number be? It will be seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
From.
Then we'll add the the put the four hundred thousand in, it brings it down, um. We add your non-lapsing funds now, it's actually reflected now, so the sixty two thousand's been applied, and then I'm gonna offer up a hundred and fifty thousand today. Um that is gonna bring that down even more. In the end, I think if you make the transfers today, I'm ballparking that you'll have a seventy five thousand dollar hole. Which is way better than seven hundred thousand, um but I'm telling you because the price has gone up again, um and. We got, I don't wanna freeze the budget, it's not, it's not showing that we should freeze the budget, but I'm showing you that we have to make some adjustments. You could avoid it at this point if you want to not transfer money, but. I'd rather know and make the transfers and start to bring that into reality as we watch it. So, any other questions about this? So this is the transfer document, alright, and I put three motions on there, alright, but let me explain kind of the picture first. So this is based obviously on the information from the financial report, so I'm gonna give you some some budgetary requests, alright? The first one, um the first budget request that's on your agenda is the center school um request for the non-lapsing funds. We had an arborist come in, I think I mentioned this last meeting, they recommend some ash trees be removed from the center school. Uh they were right over uh and next to the playground, this is not a choice, it was a safety thing, so we did it, that was on budgeted work, um which was already completed. Obviously it came out of the maintenance line at center school and it basically, I mean, is five thousand bucks, you're you're taking five thousand dollars out of out of. A maintenance line that wasn't prepared to have that much, um and so I'm regret, I'm requesting. That you adjust the payment from the B O E budget to the non-lapsing fund, and that is the first motion that's on there. And just the way your your agenda is built, you should address that item first.
Um what is the total of our non-lapsing fund right now?
Good question, so this is your, I put it on the bottom for you, your current is two hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred twenty six dollars. If you take the fifty thousand that I'm gonna ask for a minute for special education and you take the money for the tree work at center school, you'd have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars still in your non-lapsing fund. And I'll get more to the special education piece in a minute. But the tree work is not gonna hurt you, um. I probably will come back to you again next month with another request, it's a similar size, if you drive by Hall School in the morning, uh and you come from the. Did she, did she want a question, did she say? You're good, Jen?
I'm good, I'm so sorry.
Okay, um if you're coming from the Willimantic side, the light has not been flashing properly, it like, it it's like. It's it's, we don't know if it's not getting enough solar, they evaluated, they're like it's twenty years old, you gotta replace your equipment, um and that's like five thousand bucks still. That's not in the budget, so you're gonna see me come ask for that because I think it's a safety thing, um that should be blinking right and let people know like this is a school zone during these times, not blinking slow. So I'm gonna ask you to address motion one, there's a draft there if you wanna use it or don't wanna use it, but that's the the request.
I'll make a motion, um I move the Wellington Board of Education. Is it request of funds?
Yes.
The five, the four thousand. Um nine hundred ninety expenditure for tree work, did I get that right?
Nine sixty.
It's correct. Okay, that's, thank you, okay, I'm gonna start again. I move the Wellington Board of Education reclassified the four thousand nine hundred and sixty expenditure for tree work. From the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget program one, center school. Zero one point. One. This. Two six zero zero, two six zero zero.
Yeah.
Four three oh point one three, building maintenance, C E S to the non-lapsing fund.
Second.
Good job.
Yeah.
Let's make it bigger.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, why does it have to be so specific?
So. Donna and I went through the motion, we could do it to the program, but we wanted to make sure it, you knew what line it was going to. And so we put the exact account number on there, we could just say center school.
I was gonna say, can you just pull from reclassite from the program to the to the.
You 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 could.
I was just, I was curious.
She she likes it specific, so it goes, people know like. I agree, I think it lets people know that it's going to that account and it's not like I can put it where I want it.
Point one three account.
It's a point you're being flexed at.
The one three is uh center school, two three is Hall School, three three is the T O B. So any questions about the tree work? Or the the reclassification?
Okay. I think we're ready to go, like, did you have a question?
Let me.
No, we have to, we have to go down there.
You do.
Yeah, we're cleansed, are you ready? Okay, I'm saying.
I just wanna make the comment.
Go ahead.
Be a pain in the butt, things like this is why I'm gonna keep advertising, advocating for higher maintenance budget. I know you guys probably don't wanna hear it, but something like this happens all the time.
It was my first thought when this just happened, I'm like, Sam put this money in last year, she made this comment.
That's it.
Yep.
Samantha would like to point out, this is why we need to support our maintenance budget for things like this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go, if it can make you like a sign, you just fold it up.
Ah, yeah, for lack of our support, Sammy, say that.
Okay, if you're in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Then, all right, that's everybody, we're pressing it, thanks.
Okay, let me get to the second one now.
Great.
Alright, so the next budgetary request is to help um offset special education shortfall that I just went through. I'm asking for you to apply fifty thousand dollars from the non-lapsing fund. That is on top of the sixty two that you built into your budget from last year, okay? It would go to outplacement tuition and to transfer funds from transportation and fringe benefits to program three, special education. Um we prepaid at the end of last year, we prepaid a month to M and J for transportation. So there's fifty five thousand dollars and I'm asking that you move it from transportation, that will not be needed because it was a prepay. That you can put to special education, um and then we have a favorable balance today in program ten, the benefits. And so below the the transfer request here, you can see um. How I intend to get to the two thirty one, alright, so I'm gonna get that number down. With all these things, so seven hundred thousand dollars, what I told you was the overage, sixty two thousand is what was already done, one fifty five is the total of transfers that I'm just asking you to do now. Um and then the four oh seven brings us down to seventy five thousand dollar shortfall, okay? Um and again, it shows you the non-lapsing, the future funding, so that you'd be seventy five thousand in the hole. I'm asking you to not cover the whole balance right now, just in case something changes. If some student does outstanding and no longer needs a paraprofessional and it balances back. That seventy five thousand dollars shrinks, right? Um it could get worse, don't get me wrong, it could get worse, but. We're bringing it down to a a more reasonable amount, um and I I just think that's the number, so again. The request would be, there are two separate things, you, because one's non-lapsing, apply fifty thousand from non-lapsing to offset the special education outplacement cost. And then the transfer one oh five into um program three, uh and it was from fifty five thousand from program four and fifty thousand from program ten.
So can I ask about the the balance that you have below this?
Which one?
That one.
Yep.
Uh no, keep going on, yeah, so two seventy seven twenty six, is that the sixty two thousand that we planned, is that accounted for in that balance?
It is.
So that's, so our real balance is like three thirty, three thirty two.
So basically what happens is because you applied it, you, it's considered to be applied July one.
Okay.
It's already, that's sixty two thousand's already applied.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it as far as the number goes.
Correct, correct, and Donna planned it out that way, so that when, at the end of last year, when you moved money to maximize your account number. You were in that two seventy range, knowing that sixty two was already gone.
Okay.
Want me to go back to the motion?
Mm hmm.
I understand. Your reasoning for the fifty thousand.
You need to motion first.
If you want to have a discussion of motion, sure. Oh. I moved the Wellington Board of Education apply fifty thousand dollars from the non-lapsing fund to offset the costs of special education, outplacement tuition.
Second.
About this thing? Mm hmm, okay. Discussion, I'm interested.
Okay, I understand the evidency of not necessarily. Taking out the entire shortfall in in one go, um like you said, in case something happens, but at the end of the day. It would all go back to the non-lapsing fund anyways as much as possible, so let's say your scenario happened where, you know, we got some back from. From special ed, I mean, at at the end of our budget season, what we can transfer back would more likely be transferred back anyways to build that fund back up. So. I'm not suggesting necessarily taking out the entire shortfall, but I would be comfortable if we applied a hundred thousand for the non-lapsing fund to not get down to twenty five thousand. In your shortfall.
Donna and I talked about this, so one thing, um and this is why, this two oh three six thirty that's in your fringe right now. Um there's like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in health benefits right now, because the people we hired waived. So just in the health line, just the insurance piece of this, there's a lot of money and I'm only taking fifty of that. You could also potentially hold off and do another fifty on this if you wanted. And that's why it's like, I I, this is like, do you take it out, now that you have the ability to move to money to non-lapsing on at the end of the year on your own. It's like, do I wanna take it on the budget or do I wanna take it on non-lapsing? Which one's more flexible, honestly? It's six one half a dozen the other, I don't have a recommendation either way, but you could do that, you could do the hundred safely today on a non-lapsing, it comes down some. Um I'm also gonna talk to you about the playground uh rubber uh servicing in a minute, um but that's, this is. There's money in this budget, even though it shows the total education budgets, two hundred and two thousand dollars in the hole, it's it's not. We're gonna have three hundred and eighty thousand dollars pretty quickly here, so.
What are we allowed to transfer to the non-lapsing fund again?
Your max is like, is a percentage of the current year budget, yeah, it's like two percent of that. So you really, you really can't go around over, it's around that two eighty number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause my only fear is I'd hate to transfer too much, other than there's a bunch of extra in there that we can't transfer at all into non-lapsing. But we were gonna hit, we're gonna hit a wall either way, so if there's a bunch that comes back in the, from the budget at the end of the, but, you know, season and we transfer it, we're gonna hit that wall for over. Yeah. Hit that wall anyways and it's gonna let go back to town, so it's, to me, it's either way, but I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable in that. Fringe number, then that that's fine, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't. Wanna have such a huge shortfall, but if that, you know, we can evaluate monthly, hopefully that's fine.
What happens if we hired someone who did decide to take benefits?
The money's still there, there's still, there's still money there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you could almost have three people. Change at this point and not talking three people change their family benefits and you'd still be in decent shape.
Okay, that's fine.
I like the idea sticking with that and then, like you said, just keep checking it up and keep that in mind, because. You know, I have been last year, we got slammed and survived, so let's just be cautiously optimistic. Yeah. Okay, do anybody else have any comments or wishes? To go, okay, um if you're in favor of this motion, please do, if I have the same line.
Aye.
Good, great, I'll pass that on to. Motion number three.
Alright, so this is the other part of that, is the, this is the portion that is out of transportation and out of fringe, so um. It's meant to read that it's moving, you know, the one oh five, four fourteen, and you're pulling it from fifty five thousand from transportation and fifty thousand from fringe benefits. And I hope you understand my map, this one fifty five right here is these two numbers plus the fifty thousand that you just transferred.
I'm gonna repeat all this number.
You you can bypass it if you want, I mean, you can just say outplacement tuition, we know what line that is.
I got it. I move the Wellington Board of Education transfers a hundred and five thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars into program three, special education, zero one period one. Period one two seven zero period one two zero zero period five six three period three zero, outplacement tuition. So spend programs coming.
Now the.
Now the subpart, okay, fifty five thousand four hundred and fourteen from program three, transportation and fifty thousand dollars from program ten, fringe benefits. Transportation is program four. There's transportation program four, what did I say?
Program three.
Did I say three, program four, transportation and program ten, fringe benefits, there you go, thank you. Correct.
Okay. Anything to discuss on that? Good, okay, if you're free, please say aye.
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 Great, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Was that the last one?
That was.
Because I'm running out of volume. Alright, moving on to agenda item ten, which is new business, we have a bunch of minutes to, well, just groups of minutes to approve.
I need to adjust one.
Okay, so.
First one.
Just do a motion for that meeting that for. Separate them out, but you're gonna change that one.
Just that one, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes from November twen- two thousand twenty four. Second, thank you. The discussion, go ahead, Charlie.
Um it says that I, that that kid were just staying at home playing video games and my.
Give us a page number, start.
It's the board comments, the very last section. And it was, I was talking to somebody and I was just reiterating the story and they said that to me, I just wanna make that note, I didn't say that.
Gotcha.
The intent was, they're better off in school.
Yes.
To learn about that or instead of supposedly now, really wouldn't have that opportunity for a second.
Yeah. Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, anybody else have? Okay, great, if you are in favor, please. Okay, great, if you are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you. Okay, next, we're looking at policy committee meeting minutes, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. I make a motion that we pass those, or accept those minutes also. One second. Does anybody have any discussion on the other questions?
Do we want to discuss what we talked about?
Um, I think really is to deal with the minutes, but I like that idea.
Well, it's, it's not on here. If you want to discuss it, it's only till, our policy is next meeting, our next meeting, remember, you know? Generally, it's, it's just not on the agenda, so that's not what we want to hear.
Use the power of motion, ready? Okay, um, okay. So we are discussing accepting the minutes from the Wellington Board of Education Policy Committee. Meeting, which was held November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Minutes are available as always, and the recording is also available to those of you who would like to watch it. We discussed the policies regarding personally owned electronic mobile devices used in school. iPad acceptable use policy and visits to school. We also talked about public participation in board meetings, as I had previously mentioned. Hope those are topics that you would like to know more about, go ahead and refer those minutes. We're excited to talk about those topics as a whole board, do, next meeting, you're ready? One second, okay, anybody else want to discuss any? Great, okay, if you approve these minutes, then please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, John, for keep piping in.
Try and stop me.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare. Well, here we are only a few months into the school year, but why not look at the, oh no, this is our calendar. Yay, okay, item ten C is the Board of Education thirteen month calendar.
Yeah, this is, this is statute, you have to approve a thirteen month calendar, it follows the same routine from prior years. And then once it's approved, it, it's just submitted to the town clerk's office. Um, but these are the same format Tuesdays, first, or second Tuesday at morning.
Anybody have any conflicts that, um, chucked out?
Question could be a discussion.
Right?
Are we going on this right now?
You need to approve this.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve. Will we approve the Board of Education thirteen month calendar for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? Board of Education meetings?
Second.
Okay, what did you want?
So what, at seven o'clock, what, what's our thought, why, so, I feel like it's late. Is that true, is it just me, we go to seven, region's seven thirty, so, oof.
I like seven, cause six thirty is really early when.
Thanks, yeah.
Get driving from Thompson.
That makes sense.
Six thirty is hard for, I feel like, plus it's like, I don't know. Even when it, I'm trying to attend another meeting, boom. I don't eat, we don't eat till six thirty at the time, so it's dinner time for me, but that's just my family. Really, it's only easier.
I was just curious, I'm, I'm seven, I'm just curious, so.
Don't go, we're just meeting up. Okay, what, what's your family saying?
I'm fine, so I, I got you. I'm like seven, I'm trying for dinner.
I didn't make anything work.
Are you okay?
I'm good, Jen, yeah.
Uh, I, I would love earlier, but I can make seven work, so that doesn't help you guys at all. I think if seven works for the majority, we should just keep it.
Right. Okay.
It's just my life.
Okay, maybe, um, we'll be able to be like super effective and faster. Yeah, cause at ten thirty, parties are gonna top the other side. So maybe we could be a little bit on top of things and that, okay, so are we ready to go? Great, okay, if you approve the, uh, meeting calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, please say aye.
I.
Okay, so that's officially good to go, and look forward to seeing you all through all of those, hopefully. We'll see what the November, um, elections and information. Okay, um. Oh yeah, so speaking of our meetings, next we're gonna discuss our, um, agenda planning document. And there's probably some other things to add to this.
Yeah, so I, um, I started this when I came in, just to try and have a framework of what happens at different months. Um, and the board had a discussion last month regarding the, the ongoing review of data. And so I, I took the agenda, this agenda planning calendar that we use. Um, and I plugged it in some new data points. What months, kind of when they're administered, and when we could look at them. Um, obviously when they were completed, uh, and the items in green are those new items, so. I'm still working on additional data items, I did have a conversation. Uh, with Katie Richland, um, our science curriculum person for middle school, Mary Kay. Um, we have some thoughts about unit assessments coming in here, because they have four in a year, so she's gonna insert some of those. Um, so instead of doing one kind of massive review. Uh, this is more like snapshot that I can put up a slide. It's a, it, it's similar to, you know, not, I guess it's, it's more than what I, I do right now for the disciplinary data. Um, but I can put a snapshot up, so example would be like, hey, I ready math. This is what the percentages are look like, this is where, you know, kids are performing. Uh, if it's report card grades, there were in the, you know, middle school, there were sixty-five As, sixty-five Bs, sixty-five Cs. I can report all those things out, um. Is this help kind of move in that data review direction that's not, it's not complete? But I, this is kind of the, how I was envisioning, um, the board's needs and thinking about. How we could look at other data other than that big S back blast, um, you know, once a year.
I think it's good, more data is always better for the community, you see, and.
And you don't see CK LA, CK LA on here, it's intentional, because we don't know where everything's falling yet and they're working through the assessments. But that would come on to here as well, it might not be all of them, it might be some, um. Science, I think for us, science would be all of them, because there's four and it's good checkpoints, uh, but it would give you a more. The ongoing picture of performance.
I just, I have a question. I have a question, if I may, um, when we're talking about the data that. That you're gonna present, I think this is great, it's a great start to have this all mapped out like this, um. One of the, um, discussion points was comparison and where we are now versus where we were and how do we show progress? And, um, just making sure that when these presentations happen, there's a way that we can track. Like what we've already looked at and how this compares and, um, that's kind of my wish.
Yeah, and so it'll be built into it, so, uh, when we present DIBELS data, it's basically the same kind of eye ready picture, beginning, middle, end. Uh, and, you know, it's as simple as red, yellow, green, and we know where kids are at. All of the items that are on here are comparable. The only ones that are not, if there's something like they didn't have science this quarter, they had social studies, you couldn't do that, but everything else. The accountability index, S back, fiscal fitness, eye ready, DIBELS, everything that's on here, we can compare to prior. Pictures or prior times, and basically what I could do is, the first time I build the slide, Jen, I build it. If you remember the eye ready slide where it was multiple years and you could follow a grade across. Um, it would probably be like that for the year.
Okay.
This is kind of how I'm envisioning it.
That makes sense.
So yes, am I on track here, is this, is this?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And it's a living document, like you were saying, so.
That's the idea, and you know, it says October, well, if the data's not in yet, uh, you know, and we have to bump, there's flexibility to do that, the idea is that. That we were trying to almost build it in that every single month, that there's something that's gonna be there that we can show you.
Do you want to talk about that just in terms of the, um, assessment data right now?
What do you mean?
Uh, because there is a couple other things I wanted to stick on there.
Oh, yeah.
In the August, September meeting, when we have our retreat, I would like to include our board goals. And start to develop, or develop our own, um, evaluation plan for ourselves.
It's right here.
Hmm? Yeah, during the retreat, yeah.
I'm just trying to see.
Because that was something we talked about, is doing our, our evaluation for ourselves. So then in March, I would pose that we review our goals and see how we're doing. And then in May, um. We'll begin the superintendent evaluation, including deciding what part of it, or if all of it will be public. That we need to talk about, and then in June, the superintendent evaluation will be done, presented. And then in July, we can complete our own self-evaluation, instead of cramming that in with June, we can just pull that to July.
So one thing I'll, um, ask you to modify in that.
Yeah.
Is August, September, board goals is too late.
August, September.
Because what really should happen is that.
This is for January.
It, it's almost June, July, and the reason why is you want to make sure that. I had them early enough that when I build convocation and we're asking building principals to write their goals, that we have. Not that I don't think it won't be, it, it won't be aligned, you have your framework right now with your goals in it and they're broad enough, and they typically are broad enough that you can see that. But if you were gonna change something, you want to make sure we have time to pivot. So if we're gonna introduce something big in the beginning of the year, you don't want to be doing that in, in August, September. And then you've missed your two days, big PEs of role and sharing. I would do it earlier, it's almost like as you do your closure of the year.
Yeah.
You're saying, okay, next year, we want to, and that's how we're doing our, our professional development committee. That we sat down in June and we actually went through every half day, full day. And we did a draft of all of our goals for the year for professional development and laid out. All the things that need, were needed, and then plugged them in, and so every half day we have is already plugged in, might we change something, sure. It allows us to book, if we're gonna be bringing presenters, we book them earlier, so that's really done in June. And then we're just right now going back and, so we get feedback from each session. And we look at the feedback and the feedback one time was, hey, we're kind of tired of sitting in front of computers for Zoom meetings, we'd love to meet in person. Our next format, we just change it, so, um, but the sooner you do that. If you could do that toward the end of the year, it's almost helps me write my goals too, so when you do my evaluation. Hey, so you need to do a better job with, this is going well, keep it as is. Um, I can make those changes and plan for them throughout the summer to roll them out at the beginning of the year.
And the teachers can use them also when they're developing new ones.
Yeah, correct, it's all, they're all aligned. So I would just, uh, and I can do a draft of that and share it with you, bring on, so you can see that.
Yeah.
Cause again, you hit, yeah, Jen, this is fluid.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, like, but then, eventually, once it gets cooking, we'll be able to review our goals, do our self-evaluation and then. Well, do our self-evaluation and then review or adjust our goals going forward.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of setting them in the first place. Gotcha, okay. June to March, that's gonna.
So I'll keep plugging these in, if I plug something in, what I'll do is I'll just reshare it with you. So you can see that, hey, we plugged in science, or we plugged in something else for math, or, and if you see a content area that's missing. I'll either tell you why or that it's coming, when it's coming.
So are we gonna move data presentation to January? Cause you have data presentation on the Sunday, this is our Sunday.
Yes, the report card one, yeah, yeah, I wasn't ready to do it. And I moved, like, I've already presented the calendar three times, do you want me to do a change again tonight? It's sometimes just when you focus on things and move things around.
It's good to have a basic plan.
This is also.
Yes, for people to know.
Yeah.
Going on too, like I just came across the PTAs, um. Colorful, beautiful calendar of all the things that they do each month, it's really helpful.
I do it so I don't miss anything that's important.
Yeah, checklist.
Things that we have to do.
If you like, could bring a stick, a stick could be great, okay. Alright, um, are y'all set with that?
Yeah.
Cool, okay, next, we're gonna talk about the ARPA funds for the CBS play cloud, the surfacing, it seems like that was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, so, um, Donna grabbed me, uh, and she got word from the ARPA commission. That they're gonna have some leftover funds, um, they think it's gonna be at least eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and so it could be more, um, because they have interest too. She asked if I could pull together quotes for the surfacing, because they're outdated at this point, and what would it look like? Um, and to do that in time for the December twenty-third meeting, their December twenty-third meeting, that's supposed to be their final meeting, the reason why. Is they have to have all the money encumbered by December thirty-first, okay, so, um. That's good, uh, we could expend it this summer, the, the, the question is, is the, what if it's over? I'm gonna tell you, Matt Jensen sent me an email today, cause we've met previously about this, and he said, happened to be that quotes were coming in, um. It's big bucks, so one of the quotes came in, actually two of them, same, same company, different group, it was like two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But one of them was in the one thirty range, one forty range, that I've seen, I haven't picked through the quote yet. That requires some help from Public Works, this is just the price going up with everything else with inflation. Um, from the initial, it's the same company, Tressig, I think is the name of it, um, from their initial quote. And so he knew, uh, I don't know if he watched our meeting, or if he watched the ARPA commission meeting, he knew the number they were throwing out there and basically said. I could do portions for you, I could leave a portion out, um. You could ask the board to kick in more money, you could figure out how you want to do it, so. Here's the kind of wishy-washy thing that I'm asking from you, is. I can't tell you what the ARPA commission is gonna do, alright, I can't tell you the amount, they haven't voted on it yet, it's already gone, gone through public hearing. That doesn't happen again, they may come back and say we have ninety-five thousand dollars to apply towards it. The question is, what's the ceiling for you, once I get all the quotes in? And you are voting tonight, if you're gonna do this, you, you need to not vote on the vendor. You need to vote on the ceiling, which is basically the capital, what you're willing to spend. With a plan of how you're going to do that, I have two proposals for you. The first proposal is, if you're going to say one thirty, and you get eighty-seven from them. You're basically saying, we're willing to, to figure out how we're gonna get forty-three thousand dollars. On top of the eighty-seven that we're getting from ARPA, to make the project happen, okay? You can, number one. Approve, if you, you could take the avenue of trying to take it out of the repair fund money, that's the second million dollars that's out there right now. It is a repair that has been on your CIP, CIP list for years, it is not new, it's been there. And what you would do is, you would have to approve that, you would then send it to the selectmen for a town meeting. If it failed a town meeting, you need plan B, cause I don't want to sign with a vendor. And then say, we don't have the funding. My opinion is your plan B is your non-lapsing account, because that is also a CIP money grab for you, if you want to use it for that. So. This, the question you have to ask yourself is, obviously we want the lowest price for the most that we can do, right, that's, that's what the intent is, um. If you want to buy yourself time and just go to a higher number and then come back and I can share the proposals. I can encumber the money, but I need a vendor to do it with. I can tell you right now which vendor is the cheapest, but what I could do is not sign the contract with them, I could come back to you in January. I could have already encumbered the funds with that vendor. Not sign the contract, come back in January, show you the, the options of what he's laid out, once I've looked at them. And then you could go, I think this, we should do this. My first glance at what I got late today, was it something like, you know, in the one thirty range. It's, if Public Works does all the prep work, you could do this whole area minus this section. Uh, at the one fifty range, you could do this whole area. Uh, at the one fifty range, you could do this whole area, um, the entire area with Public Works doing the crap. If it's one seventy, we do everything and it's every, every section. I just haven't had enough time to look at it, cause I literally got it today. Yeah.
Can you just remind me of the scope of what we keep on right now?
Yeah. So, good question. Thank you. So, um. This came on to the Capital Improvement Committee. There's a portion right now that has rubberized playground service. It's, it's fall safety. So instead of putting down mulch every year, you have a rubberized surface. And when we close playground each year, because the ground is frozen. This would take that away. Now, if there's a foot of snow on it, the playground's closed. But once the snow melts, even if it's twenty degrees out, that, that rubber surface doesn't freeze like that. So we still have the fall protection, the playground's open. So if you just have a, a, a low snowfall year and you, but it's cold and the kids are going out, you can use the playground. If it's twenty five degrees and you have a little snowfall year and the ground is frozen, you can't use the playground with wood chips. So literally, we have to go out, we dig a hole when we hit frost. We gotta measure it and if it's below a certain amount, then we can't open the playground. And sometimes it's closed for months and months and months. So the idea is to get this rubberized surface around uh the, the playscape areas, the swings. Um, and that would remove the need for the mulch each year. Um, and so that you could open the playscape each, you know, when it's cold out and not have to worry about the fall safety.
Okay, cause I do remember. Parent with correspondence a while ago. Talking about how they were kind of upset their kid wasn't comfortable to play. I've probably multiple parents.
Yeah.
Set it up not being able to leave the playground during winter months when there's not that much snow.
Two things, it's always that, cause the ground is frozen and temperature, if it's below twenty, we don't go out. And some people would say, I don't care if it's below twenty, get them out, let go run around, that's why you wear a heavy coat. It's just not every kid has a heavy coat, but we get those two complaints often.
I was thinking about it.
Yeah, I.
If we encumbered the money, we'd have to encumber the whole amount, right?
You're not just. You don't have to, no, you don't have to encumber the eighty seven. What you're gonna encumber is anything, and that's why I, I did a draft motion for you. I didn't share it with you. Um, this might help. I acknowledge this too. So it's basically. And at the maximum of one thirty, I just, uh, just like the fifty thousand, I threw it for non-lapsing. It's a number. I just put it in. I didn't. Jump off anything, you know, I didn't pull off contracts. And wrote with at least eighty seven thousand dollars coming from the ARPA commission and a maximum of forty three thousand from the C I P. School Repair Fund or and or non-lapsing count. That motion allows you to not get in trouble if you. If it fails a town meeting. Because you gotta, you gotta make sure you have a plan for it.
Is the eighty seven guaranteed?
Donna feels confident in the eighty seven. Donna feels confident that there's gonna be more than the eighty seven. The problem, and this is why they're in the spot, is some projects have come, have, have just, are not gonna happen, I think. People drag their feet, or they said, I want fifty five and the project came in at thirty seven and there's extra money. And so that's, they saved money for this type of purpose. So she's confident in the eighty seven and she said, honestly, I think it's gonna be more than that. I'll tell you, she, she mentioned to me, she thinks they're gonna have about seventeen thousand in interest. That ha, that has to be applied to something that's already an approved item. There aren't many things left.
If there's a more than our ratio.
We get, so if, good question. So they're not cutting it off at eighty seven. The way Donna said was. They are just telling you, can you get this? Let's go. They, the thought process that I have heard was, um, if they get to have a hundred and two. They're gonna apply a hundred and two to this project. Um, but I don't think it would be less than what our request was, and I think her request was ninety, if I remember correctly. So.
Kind of like the same of voting, right, then before we know what the labor is gonna do.
It is, it is. The voting is just a matter of. That you're gonna support if it's over that amount. Cause I'm gonna be honest with you. If you only get ninety and you don't want to kick in any extra money, you could do that and we're gonna do ninety thousand dollars worth of servicing, whatever that looks like.
Hmm.
Right? Or you could do, and this is what's like a budgetary thing, you could get the ninety, I think you have two years to spend this. You could do ninety thousand dollars from ARPA and then ask for ninety thousand dollars in C I P. I think that's weird because you already have two million dollars. That's a repair fund. I don't think you should do that. That's why I'm saying you should, you, you kind of take one of those two pounds.
Is there a diff, oh, sorry, is there a difference between the products, between the highest bidder and the lowest bidder? Obviously, the groundwork is different, cause they want our guys to do it.
I think it's marked way up.
Okay, so it's not like a better product, like lowest bidder?
I, again, I will compare all the specs and all the materials. I'll look at all the stuff. Um, it was, it happens to be that whatever the, the same companies that were in the two hundred thousand range. They were both um this, doing the same product and I guarantee they just had product pricing.
Okay.
Um, the big savings, and there's pros and cons to having Public Works do some of this work. Is that if something fails, are you, and this is one thing why I have to dig into the contracts. Are we then responsible for? They're gonna say, hey, you did the prep and your product's failing, our product's failing, sorry.
Yeah.
I need to read the contracts and make sure of that. Um, and that's why I say, like, is there a cap that you wanna get to? And if you approve it this way, it allows you to need to. Get the contractor um money encumbered. Not sign the contract and bring that contract back to you in January for you to make a decision to say. Cause you can always kick in more. If you said, hey, we, we decided one twenty, but we're actually gonna, we're gonna add more money to it. We're gonna make it one fifty, cause now we see the, the contract. And we want to make sure it's done right. You just gotta figure out where that money's coming from.
We, have we encumbered any of that?
No.
Union or do we have?
Oh, 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 of the two million, I think you played your, for, for your facility study with that.
The, what was it? Chimney work, the ladder?
No, we got the chimney work out of the budget.
So we don't real have at this point?
There's basically two million dollars in there.
Is it one, two million?
It might be. It's probably, it's, I, I think it's a point three.
Because we.
Yeah. I'm saying two million, it's, it might be like two points, two seven five.
Yeah, cause Peter pulled from hundred seventy five from that for a budget.
And it was.
Last budget.
Yeah, that was.
It's two and change, two and low change.
I think it went from one point five to one point three, so it was a change, so the better.
Okay.
So it's a question of, do you wanna fund the, consider funding the project if it's higher than that amount? I can tell you already it's higher than that amount. Um, and then how do you want to fund it? And are you okay with that, that plan?
Does this motion lock us into one, it doesn't lock us into one thirty, right?
So it locks you into a maximum of one thirty, but you could always come back and add another motion and say. We're, we're, so if you did the one thirty and you're gonna kick in the forty three and you came back and said, we are gonna make a motion to add another twenty thousand dollars. To make sure we get everything we wanted, you could do that. Cause it's just a matter of changing and encumbers that has nothing to do with ARPA. That's your.
Are you thinking more change in cap?
Yes and no, because you don't, like with, the point is made earlier, you don't wanna. You don't want to encumber too much and leave yourself hanging, especially if you can come back to it afterwards. Uh, this is something that I screamed about many years ago for ARPA and I was mad at many ARPA people for dragging their feet. And denying us this money for the longest time. Um, I'm glad the foot dragging has had a, has had a good response for us. Uh, but I, if you're, if you're asking me. My maximum's two hundred grand, but again, I've championed this thing, so I'm a little biased on those.
I was right there, the same number, actually.
So, I mean. Hey, you know, I think it's, it's two hundred grand, let's say it is eighty seven and let's say everything has to come from, now last thing, that's a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
That's my oldest.
I'm, I was gonna say the same thing. I, I think the money that we have in the repair fund at C I P is a perfect. Spot to take this money from. Um, particularly at this point in the year, committing our non-lapsing fund to something like this is very. It's kind of nerve wracking.
You could also do this because the timing, it's not a project tomorrow, right? It would be a summertime. Project, which means, um. You, say you wanted to commit more, but you wanted to say, when it goes to town meeting, maybe you're gonna. Say, we're gonna hope for a hundred, but maybe we'll get fifty. You could go, you could ask for, for fifty thousand dollars out of your, cause it has to be approved, right? And then you pay the balance. You don't actually have to pay from the eighty seven thousand up, if that makes sense. It also, the timing matters, because you could get to town meeting early enough to know that, hey, we asked for fifty thousand. So now we're at, you know, one, one thirty seven, right? That, okay, we still need twenty five thousand dollars more, that you can either take it from your non-lapsing. Or you could budget for it, cause it's July one, like. Or you could go, hey, we have one thirty, we got, this is what we got and we're gonna adjust the project. Like, you have some flexibility in that. The biggest thing is to commit to the project and make sure that the ARPA funds get encumbered. That is the biggest thing.
Do we all agree that we need to do, set a number? Or is anybody saying, no, we should not do this at all?
I think we should do it, but I also feel like.
Scared.
We're, no, I think we should do it, cause I think kids.
They need it.
They need it and. Some kids need the playground. All the time versus trying to come up with games or other things to do outside of, you know, because they're. Because of who they are and the playground is the best thing. My daughter's twenty two and she still talks about the better school playground, the old one, so.
A lot of numbers, everybody come pull it.
Just a quick question. This is gonna be in addition to the rubbering that's already there? Are they gonna replace that?
I think that whole thing comes out.
Okay.
But again, I wanna look at where it is. What's the thickness? That might be the difference, the thickness and the thickness. He's, he's willing to allow someone to come in and do the prep work. Is he gonna look at the prep work and go, no, that's not good. I'm not pouring until it's right. I have a lot of details I need to figure out. Um, to me, the right way to do it is put it all on a contractor. So that way, if the prep work's not done right and something fails, you're calling them. They can't go. Cause you know that finger pointing thing is gonna happen if something fails with it. Um. And I don't know that. The, like that one thirty number, I think is the number you're trying to figure out right now. I don't know that that matters right now.
And we could go higher.
You could, you could save, you could save a hundred thousand right now and come back and you, that allows me to get. The vendor encumbered at the eighty seven. ARPA money set and then we come back in January and we look at it again and I show you all the options. Um, I can show you what's in the contract and you may go, you know, I could present you with a couple of options based upon what he shared. Because he's gonna be the lowest, I know he was the lowest bidder compared to the, the ones that, um, we had four companies and one, two didn't call back.
What, which bid are you going to show with ARPA? The lowest bidder, you think of?
It's, they don't, they don't care. As long as you, you go through your process, it's the Tressig company. As long as we have that, we would, all they care about is that. We encumbered the eighty seven thousand dollars or whatever they're gonna give us on December twenty third. Which then we would also know next meeting what they're gonna give us, cause they have to. To use all their money. They don't want to turn any money back, right? We know what the exact number is at your January meeting. And that's what we'd be encumbered to, um, to Tressig.
But if you give them a one thirty bid and they magically find money and they're like, oh, we gave you a whole one thirty. Like, is there more on the table that we missed out on? Because we only showed one thirty?
Who?
ARPA.
No, no.
Doesn't work that way?
No, no, no. I, I literally have been given the number eighty seven thousand dollars. It's like, I, I think it's eighty six thousand seven hundred fifty nine or something like that. And then like seventeen thousand in interest. That's Donna's number, rough number. But she has to have all those things back and prepared for the December twenty third meeting, cause that's supposed to be their wrap up and final meeting.
There's no, there's no point, ARPA, keeping it, cause they can't keep the money. Anything that we get encumbered goes back to the same by December thirty.
Right, so if they, if we give them, I didn't know if we show them bids and if they see a bid only one thirty, they'll give it to a different town versus us or something like that.
No, it's ours.
I have a, I have a question. Um, I can't figure out how to raise my hand the Zoom way, so I'm just gonna, I just have to talk. Um, where did the eighty seven thousand come from?
So that is the balance of all of the ARPA project money, the, from ARPA projects that have come in. Uh, either haven't been completed or came in under bid. Um, and so any money that we got, we spent every dollar. Um, and so that's what's left and that's where the eighty seven thousand is coming from. Um, and that's why I said, Donna said, listen, it could be a little bit more, um, but she feels comfortable in that number today. Um, and. Whatever you vote on is, and that's why she, she changed the motion when I talked to her. She said at least eighty seven thousand dollars from ARPA, because she, she's gonna advocate to get us the most we can. And one fell swoop in the project. And then it's whatever number. Because you wrote the, because the motion's that way, if it's ninety thousand, you're not gonna meet again. You've approved it because it said at least eighty seven thousand dollars and it's, and then we, it's encumbered and we're set. Does that make sense, Jen?
Yes. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't an estimate that we got like three years ago and now it's no good and, okay.
No, the ninety thousand was, was, um. We thought was gonna be a good estimate, but the, the cost is, cause just all, everything's just gone up. A hundred percent, so much products. It is crazy.
Okay, I wanna commit to this project and make it happen. We have a zillion things on our plate. Nothing's getting done, we're full out of them, because we have red tape and our hands tied in a lot of ways. There's been, there's lots of reasons why we need to do this. It's not just for hahas or to look nice, because it's a safety issue, number one. And it's a health and wellness issue physically and mentally for our students and there's tons of science to support that. And you could ask any staff member what it's like to have a room that we're a month, a month, days, weeks, months at a time. It's not good for anybody. So the P T A is standing up and putting up a lot of activities for the children to do, to be engaged and enriched where they have to be inside. So let's do our part and I'll take care of what they need when they're outside. Um, I think we're agreeing on the motion that was posted for now. And knowing that we might make changes as it goes forward, especially after Phil takes deeper dive into the, um, information I do.
The quote, yeah.
Okay, so we probably shouldn't have made this motion first to begin with.
I will with Board of Education approve the Center School Playground Servicing Project at an maximum of a hundred and thirty thousand with at least eighty seven thousand. From the ARPA mission funding and a maximum of forty three thousand from the C I P School Repair Fund and or are not lasting.
Second.
Okay, anyone ask this question? Alright, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, please let us know, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, it'll be, I'll let you know as soon as I know that. Thank you. I was glad that Donna told me.
Thank you, Donna. You're the best. Okay, let's look at the twenty five, twenty six, Wellington Public School Calendar.
This is why we look at this multiple times. Um, so there's a couple of things on here. One's gonna be a real new thing for you. One's gonna be, uh, simple. We had December twenty third as a full day. Uh, in prior years, it's, it's been a half day. Um, so I put the circle around this, cause to be quite honest, when you December twenty third as a full day of school. Probably shouldn't be. Um, so if you're okay with that, December twenty third, that was changed to, um, a half day. The other piece that was done here, um, and something I've been looking at for a couple of years is that. We're supposed to have, um, a second, a spring conference time. And we have not had that in our calendar. And we've struggled to figure out how to do it and, and, uh, just talking through administrators and getting some feedback from staff. What we did, um, we had, uh, this March day here, this Friday, that's the sixth. I think it was the twentieth before, that's the P V day. Well, what we did was we bumped it back because we didn't want to do the conference, spring conferences too late. So it's now on the first, what would happen? It would be the first week of March. The fifth would be a half day. Both schools would have conferences, both would have early releases, no professional development on the fifth. It would go into the evening, so both would have evening conferences, okay? And then the sixth would be seen as professional development and or overflow. The way the statute is written is that you must offer conference. The way the statute is written is that you must offer conferences. What I had said to staff is that I think, oh, anybody that wants us, us, a conference anytime should get it. Okay, but in no, I see the November conferences, like at Center School in particular, it's harder than middle school, because they do teaming. But they've done a better job of get, making sure people get conferences, is that every kid at Center really gets a conference. Uh, the middle school is kind of parent request or, um, teacher request. The March conferences would operate the same way. So it wouldn't, we don't have enough time in this schedule to do every Center School's family. But what we would do is, we would offer it. So for both schools, it's basically figured from one-thirty to eight o'clock at night, you know, that they have conference blocks, we figured out, we can fit in about twenty conference blocks, um, which is the number of our elementary classrooms, max, right? Um, and then the middle school, because they do an entire grade, they couldn't get everybody in, but not everyone wants a conference anyways. It will work out, we have the overflow on the sixth, I think this would provide the best of both worlds with the option for the PD on the sixth. We know we have the childcare in place. It's not adding, um, three half-days in a row, because the first request was, well, maybe we do a half-day on the fourth, a half-day on the fifth, and a half-day on the sixth, I didn't wanna go there. The idea again is the fifth is the half-day, with the conferences, the sixth is meant to be PD, but if somebody can't meet, that's when they're gonna do it, and even if they're on Zoom, they can Zoom. So those are the two changes, um, to the, to the calendar that we have at this point.
We could even do like grade level PD on that day, because chances are if, um, if teachers need to have conferences, it would be grade level-ish, you know, so.
Yeah, and it might just, that might be a more flexible PD day, where it's like, hey, you're gonna do what you need, based upon where you're at in a, in a program, or whatever it is, because if I'm planning three of us to do something, and one person has to leave for forty-five minutes, that messes it up, so the idea here is that there's more of a focus on parents guardians than there is on the PD on the sixth. If it happens as PD, fantastic. But the goal would be to, me, we make sure, anybody that wants a conference, it happens on the fifth and sixth. And then we're meeting that fifth and sixth, uh, so your next question's gonna go, what are we gonna do this year? Um, we're looking at, and we have to meet with PDAC, we're actually considering the same type of approach for March this year, but not adding a half-day. So anybody that would want the, uh, a conference, that we can try and figure that out. The hard thing is it's on a Friday, and I will not ask staff to stay until eight o'clock on a Friday night, um, I would be roasted. We might have to provide coverage a different time or figure it out, but, uh, we're trying to figure out, sort that out, so what that, can we do that this year?
Now, how does that work for staff when they're there, like, all day, do they just bring breakfast, lunch, dinner?
We typically feed them at night, um, the principals do a really good job, I, I, they, the, uh, thousand-dollar award that Center School won from Horace Mann. She had it catered by, oh my gosh, over in stores, uh, Red Rock, chicken parm, pasta, it was, it was, the staff appreciated it. Um, but we always do food, they do get a, a dinner time, we have a break in there. Jane Castle actually used to make a huge dinner for all the Center School staff that wanted to eat, like, stock pumpkin sausage, it was amazing. Um, but they do, they have four nights in their contract. And so that night fits within their contract, we don't have to change anything in our contract. Um, if they're done, we're gonna send them home. Um, but the idea again is that any parent that wants a conference gets it.
Which again, they can ask for at any time.
Anytime. Correct.
It's just, so there's two specific times in a school year that are designated, so, you know, like, it's normal reminders.
Yep.
Also, a lot of parents are, I think some parents are uncomfortable asking for a conference outside of a designated time. Good thing for them, just feel like, hey, you know, you can, you can, spring here's a good, a good day for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So you, this is gonna be, uh, coming up again in January, that's when you're gonna, the plan is to vote on this. So again, I, I hope there's no more changes to it, we've gone through this, but that was one of the biggies that we were looking at. Uh, and I think, I think honestly, both things make sense, I hope you do too.
Bye.
Are you gonna move on? Can I make a suggestion?
Sorry, I was thinking about to suffer.
That's okay. Can I make a suggestion to you, um, and I did not do this intentionally, um, for the people that are on the meeting, I, the new business for the executive session for my contract, I don't know if it makes sense to flip-flop that with President to speak. Because I'm, uh, uh, my assumption is that you're not gonna come back, and, you know, people aren't gonna be here. You're gonna kick them out of the meeting, uh, and, and are they gonna come back in, I, I don't know, that's up to you. If you want to make a motion and flip-flop those two agenda items, I don't have a problem with that, and if you wanna do President's speak first, that's up to you. Cause I don't think you're gonna vote on, I don't think you're gonna vote on, on the thing, that's what we shared, man.
We have to vote to change the agenda.
You would have to vote to change the agenda. To flip-flop the ladies.
Um, I move that we swap item twelve and item thirteen, so we can hold President to speak before our new business item.
Hi.
Oh, you're voting.
Oh, I thought you asked me for my vote, sorry, I am paying attention.
Everybody now, you're in favor. Thanks. Okay, so then we are, our new agenda item twelve is President to speak. If you're here in person or online, call it unanswered, and or you can unmute yourself. Anybody on?
Yes.
Okay, well. Great, okay, thank you. Okay, so new agenda item thirteen is new business. Um, with a potential executive session recording, this agenda contract, do we?
Yeah, so I wrote, I wrote potential, because I think if, when, if you're gonna talk trial, I don't like to say you should go in, you have to go into executive session, uh, to talk about my contract, you should go into executive session, and you should invite me. Um, if you're going to do that, you have to clear the room, which is why you do President to speak, and clear the, the Zoom, so.
Nice, so anyone in the executive session?
Say the reason why, please.
Uh, discuss for us.
Bye-bye, thanks for coming. Sounds agenda. Okay, we don't have any time left, do we?
Yes.
Oh, okay, if you're afraid, please say. Thanks.
Second, I'm gonna pause the recording.
It is nine forty, and we are coming out of the executive session after our discussion. And so we're moving on to agenda item fourteen, which is board comment.
We have a comment, um, I don't often get into the schools, but lately I've had a lot of opportunity between negotiations, and then conferences, and then the sales, um, selling the whole holiday items. And I have to say that everybody is doing an outstanding job. I'm gonna say making lemonade. You know, the floors are shiny, the, you know, the classrooms are warm and welcoming, and you know, the administrators are doing a great job with everybody, I had wonderful conferences with teams that really had it all together, and and, um, you know, with individual teachers, and everybody's kind of embracing the curriculum and excited about it, which I think is great, after we, you know, worked on it, so I want to say thank you to everybody. Everybody's doing a good job, including you. So, thank you all.
I was gonna say, thank you to, uh, Marsha for her presentation, I think it, it gives us, um, foundation for our discussions when it comes to the budget, that we all are in the same, on the same page, understanding what special ed department looks like, and what they do, and how students, um, enter and exit special education services, and, um, how it all works, so I appreciate that presentation, especially timely right now.
So I just wanted to, uh, shout out our Parks Director, Jimmy Pelion. Uh, the reason I'm doing it now is because, and he emailed this to me, he's like, I don't think I'm blowing up this body, but he gave us two weeks notice for the town. He's moving on to bigger and better things, and I know he's not, you know, part of education, but a lot of the stuff he does affects the kids in this town, I'm the third and fourth grade girls' basketball coach, and he is on top of the schedule, will make sure everybody gets gym time, and he does the, the tree decorating, and the tree lighting, and he's done a fan, he lived in here a year and a half, he's done a fantastic job, and I really like Jimmy, and I wish him the best, and I hope that, uh, hopefully he does well in his future, and I'm sad to see him go, but he's a great guy, and I wish him the best.
We partner on a lot of things.
He has a great job with summer school, I mean, summer camp.
Yep.
Excellent job, moving on, yeah, I miss him.
I, um, I didn't have anything until Arthur just said that, and now I'm really, really sad, so, um, that's really a bummer.
Well, yes. And it also just reminds us that, um, we're a board of education of a few people, and we work for our school district, but also, uh, we're a big part of Wellington, and our community um, has to come together on a lot of things to make it the best place for our children to grow, and for our elders to enjoy their golden years, and for everybody in between. So as we move forward into the budget season and the new year, um, maybe that's something to, for everyone to keep in mind, and try to do our best to work collaboratively for what is best for our community, um, and consider all of the things that are going on, and try to work puzzle pieces together in a smart way, in a way that's best for as many people as possible, and there might have to be a little bit of give and take. Um, but that's part of being in a relationship, and we are in a relationship with each other, and that is Wellington. So perhaps, um, a little bit of that goodwill and, um, positive wishes for the future. Maybe that's a good way to end twenty twenty-four for our board meetings, and, um, look forward to what is to come. All right, so we are ready to adjourn, somebody wants to make that motion? I move that we adjourn our meeting. Everybody's done?
And, Sam.
Nine, all agree, okay, we are adjourning at nine forty. Thank you.